So Graham and John are coming up. Welcome, gentlemen.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Graham Finley with Grand Thornton presenting our regular oversight report on the pension Normally, we start off with an overall slide that sort of talks about summary of project status across the various phases. I think Andrew and Ashish have pretty much already covered a lot of that content. So what I want to do in my presentation, my remarks, is really focus on the fit gap exercise because we think it's probably the most impactful thing that the project is doing right now. We want to make sure that you fully understand what's happening if you have any questions for us around that, that we can discuss that. So that's really where I'm going to focus my remarks, but obviously, if you have questions about anything, we'll take that. So let's see. Yeah. So I put this background slide together when we put the slides together, and I don't know that we necessarily need to go through this in much detail because I think Andrew and Ashish covered a lot of the background, but I do want to sort of just summarize the narrative, if you like. The schedule that CGI delivered in late July, there's a lot of uncertainty around whether that schedule was really achievable, particularly for FR2. And a lot of that is around the pending design decisions. So this fit gap exercise is intended to address this uncertainty so we can get a solid baseline for FR2, so we understand what the scope really looks like, the schedule and the costs associated. Once that fit gap is complete, CalSTRS and Team CGI are going to negotiate a revised baseline along all of those areas, and that's an activity that's intended to happen in December. And in parallel, there's this improvements track that was mentioned by Andrew and Ashish to look at other opportunities for improving or modifying the overall approach to the project. We've really been focusing a lot of our efforts in the last six weeks around the improvement track, but especially the fit gap. And we've attended almost all of the fit gap meetings and the planning sessions. And part of what we've been doing is trying to identify really what are the critical success factors to make this exercise successful? And where is the project in terms of achieving those? So I want to talk about that a little bit. So in terms of critical success factors, this, sort of boiling it up, there are four that I want to share with you. The first is a shared definition of success so that both the CalSTRS project leadership as well as CGI have a common understanding about what this is all about and what success looks like. And really, it's around coming to a common understanding of how the system needs to work and will work, and having a common understanding of what's going to take to get there. To do that, we need engagement from the right stakeholders. And obviously, that's the right people on the Team CGI side, but we're also particularly looking to make sure the right people from CalSTRS are in the room. And what we mean by that, generally, these fit gap sessions are organized by business process, so we want to make sure that the business process owners are in the room, and those people are the people that have the knowledge around those business processes, as well as the authority to actually make decisions about how things should work. The whole point of this exercise is to eliminate ambiguity. And so where there may be a requirement that isn't, if you just read the text on its own, it's not perfectly clear how that's really meant to work. These sessions have to get down into the weeds and really understand what exactly needs to be built in the near-spin product or any changes to the near-spin product to make that occur, and that both CalSTRS and CGI, Team CGI, are fully in agreement that, yes, this is what this requirement means, and this is what it will take to implement it. And finally, that there can be timely decisions made about the design so that as CalSTRS is considering the design decisions or the recommendations that are being made, that they are able to make decisions to say, yes, we want to go this direction, or no, we want to make a change. Yes? Yep.
Graham, when would we know whether or not there's a shared definition of success, whether or not the engagement of the stakeholders has take place, and whether or not ambiguity has been eliminated?
Okay. So let me comment on where things are to date then. On the shared definition of success, I would say that there has been, I think, some good dialogue between CGI and CalSTRS at the leadership level around what the point of this exercise is and what success looks like. I think the project sponsors did a good job at the initial kickoff for these fit gap sessions to lay out to the team, this is what we're trying to do in terms of getting down into the details, understanding how the system is going to work, recognizing that CalSTRS wants to use as much of the near-spin product as it is designed as possible, but also recognizing if that is not possible or practical, then there may need to be changes. What I think you always have to do, though, is reinforce that on a regular basis because it's very easy to get into these meetings and get into the heat of the moment, and people sort of, they get into it, and you have to bring yourself back a little bit and sort of, okay, let's remember why we're here and what the ultimate objective is. And I think generally, we've seen that occurring. On the engagement of the right stakeholders, we have seen the right people in the room. So the people, particularly on the CalSTRS side, that the business process owners have been in the room, they are the people who know the system, or they know the business processes. One thing we've been encouraging is that those people are vocal, that they're the people who are really talking, and they're the ones who are saying, no, this is what's really going to work for us. And we have seen quite a lot of that. In terms of the timely decisions on design, we're still sort of waiting for the first set of decisions to come out of the first series of process. And I'll see the first couple of fit gap process sets. The sessions have finished, there are a set of recommendations for design decisions that have come out of that, but decisions have yet to be made on those. That's something we're anticipating happening over the next several weeks. What we have seen come out of those first set of sessions is a fairly significant set of potential customizations to the system. And that shows itself in a couple of different ways. One of the comments that was made earlier on was this, around 20% of the requirements associated with the system had originally been anticipated to be customized. We are seeing additional requirements being identified as well. Maybe we thought that could be out of the box, but as we really get into it, no, it may need to be customized, and we've probably seen about 100 of those bubble up over the course of the FR2 design to date. But I wouldn't focus on the raw numbers of requirements too much, at least not on their own, because for every one of these potential customizations, there's a spreadsheet that CGI has created, and it has a sort of an impact assessment, goes from small, medium, large, to very large, and it's pretty much a logarithmic scale. Very large is much, much, much larger than a medium or a small, and there are quite a lot of very large customizations that are popping out as potentials. And so that's really what we're looking at on this decision-making process, is how are those decisions made and what the cumulative impact of that will be to the overall design of the system and the schedule and cost associated with it.
Customizations? You said they're small, medium. Is there a correlation between the size of those customizations and a price tag to each one of those customizations?
There will be a correlation to a level of effort, but whether there's an actual... So you've got to differentiate, I think, when you say cost, how are you thinking about it? Because there's a potential for, well, dollars, hard dollars and soft dollars, right? This is the point I want to make. There's the potential for hard dollar costs in terms of is CGI going to get paid more? That's an unanswerable question at this point because that's part of what's going to happen over the next month or so as we're getting into the details. Regardless of the answer to that question, there will be a soft dollar impact because even if you're not paying CGI a penny for a particular customization, if it's an extra month or two months of time, this CalSTRS staff time associated with that, right? So that's still, it's an unknown at this point.
We don't want to compromise quality from our oversight. You know, are we moving towards the green, yellow? Where the momentum from my role is we don't want to compromise quality of the project. We want to mitigate risks along the way. We want to control the costs so that at the end of the project, we have a quality project that's reached its objectives, that's within a reasonable range of the budget, and within a reasonable timeframe.
Right. And I guess my, actually, my response to that, maybe sort of on the next page, in terms of our perspective on this, in terms of recommendations, really, these are joint recommendations to CalSTRS and CGI around this process. And to follow up on that point, one of the things I want people to remember is customizations are not free. Even if you don't end up having to pay CGI for them, there's a cost, and it's a long-term cost. I think the point was made in the slide that Ashish discussed, as you customize a product, a commercial off the self-product, it becomes progressively harder to do upgrades and maintenance over time, right? That doesn't mean you should never customize. There's always going to be that balance. But our, what we're advocating basically is that for every one of these potential customizations, the project team really looks seriously at what are the alternatives? Is there a way to get to sort of the same business objective or a similar business objective without having to do the customization? If there isn't, okay, then let's look at the customization, but can it be justified based on the business benefits, right? And I'm going to use that term a lot in the next couple of minutes because that, to me, is sort of, if there's a sort of a guide star for the project, it's what are the business benefits? And are we still on track to achieve that set of benefits that Andrew went through, which is, you know, those have been around for years? And that's really the constant here, is where are we heading in terms of a solution? Is it going to end up delivering those kind of business benefits? And everything else just sort of moves around that. So we're definitely encouraging that, a really serious look at what are the alternatives? And even if it's not a perfect solution, is it maybe a good enough solution for now? But it will reduce the complexity and maybe the schedule impact around this, right? And that's a lot of this exercise that's going on because cumulatively, these things will add up, right? And I think the last two bullets I had here around this negotiation process they're going into, what we're advocating, I guess, is for the projects, CalSTRS and CGI, to really be imaginative and be willing to revisit assumptions. There were decisions made a couple of years ago when the project was, contract was signed, and we're going through the proposal process. Projects learned a lot in those couple of years, and it's okay to revisit some of those assumptions and think about how do we go about doing this right now to get to those business benefits? And I'll give you an example that's nothing to do with this customization stuff or around the fit gap, but I think illustrates the need to sort of maybe rethink some things a little bit. The schedule that was proposed by CGI, remember that table that Ashish went over with the various columns on it? Even if those dates stayed exactly as they were proposed in July, what you're looking at right now between FR1 going live and FR2 going live is over two years. That's a really long time, right? And one of the things that projects run on, it's almost like fuel, is motivation and momentum and enthusiasm. And as you go through these projects without having a win, it's like a tank that starts to get empty, right? And you've got to figure out ways to refill the tank periodically. So you need to have wins, right? And you can't really go two years without a win. It doesn't mean you have to be implementing software all the time, but you have to have something that people can really credibly say, you know, we did something, we succeeded on something, and we're moving in the right direction, and we can sort of prove it to anybody who's looking at it that we're actually really making progress. And that's something the project's going to have to think through regardless of what happens with this whole fifth gap stuff, but it's an example, right? So I would, I guess I'd sort of give you the heads up that when the project comes back to you in February, don't be surprised if there's some pretty big changes on the table for the way the project might get structured and the way it gets sequenced and how things gets done. And I think that's good to sort of lay that kind of thing out and be imaginative, but I guess my advice would be if you're looking at that as, okay, why are we making these changes? The one thing that we're keeping as a constant is the business benefits and the vision for what the pension solution is meant to do. And are these changes getting us closer towards that vision or keeping us on the track to that vision, or are they moving away from the vision? And that's really the guideline. You know, and cost and schedule and stuff is sort of, it's a means to an end, right? It's not an end in itself.
Any questions? Graham, thank you. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll give it a minute to load up my deck. My name's John Lemlin, I'm with Maximus. I'm happy to be back and as you're acting as your independent verification and validation vendor. Kind of like the way Graham started, we've done, I think, a really good job over Graham and then Anthony and Andrew and Anthony go through the status. So I'm going to get to my first slide, which shows the overall status of the project. This is the green, yellow, green, red bulb we use. It's red. It was something that we actually talked about, I think, when in the July meeting. I think we were right on the cusp. The ideas or the issues haven't changed that much. We still remain concerned about a lot of things that you've already heard about specifically around the understanding of the requirements, how much customization is being required, and ultimately, the impact of the schedule. As kind of down and dirty technical guys, we always end up with the schedule. We want to see a schedule that's got all the work in it, that's resource-loaded, that's got contingency, and we've been red for quite a while because the project's been working on getting that. So that's kind of the high-level bottom line, I guess. Yes, ma'am?
No, you're good.
Oh, okay. So I don't want to go back over all the things you already heard. I would say from Maximus' standpoint, we're very encouraged by the things that you've heard about regarding fit gap. We've also been sitting in the meetings, and they're going very well. CGI is doing a nice job, I think, managing them and keeping track of the topics and the action items and the gaps. They've got their vendor demoing their system as the baseline out-of-the-box solution. So they are coming along, they are going well, I think. I think about a third, half to a third are finished now, and as Graham mentioned, they're starting to produce their gaps. And I think the number is something around 70. So that's all very, very encouraging. That's something that absolutely had to happen as well as a project improvement. So it's not just going through the functionality of the system and what do you need, but I think, as Graham mentioned, there's a big, very significant creative exercise going on about how can we make sure we deliver value but manage schedule and cost without compromising quality. So all that's good. That's the good news. The second step in this process is the hard work, and that's, as Graham mentioned, that's the negotiation. Now, the good news there is that the process has already started. There's already been, I think, three or maybe four weekly meetings of the management team, of the executives, including Ashish, Andrew, Cassandra, and Robin, to work with CGI, talking about the actual outputs of these fit gaps. So there's gaps that are coming out, there's the spreadsheet with a lot of information on it. In the process of how important is this, is there an operational change we can make instead? What's the impact to the county or to the district? What's the impact to quality services? You know, all that is all being discussed as the project goes through the process. So that's the right way to do it. I think the trick to that is going to be, and I think IVNV is concerned, looking ahead a little bit more, is the fit gaps and process improvements are going well, the output of those is going to be, getting from those outputs, which are gaps, to quality, which doesn't change, so you've got cost and schedule left, in getting agreement with all the different parties, the branches, the users, the stakeholders, and CGI and their contractors, on what's the priority of that feature? Is there other options to go live without it? Can you schedule it differently than you've done, and ultimately, what's the cost? So that process, that negotiation is going to be critical. It's the reason we're doing the fit gap because at the end of the day, as your IVNV, I want a schedule. I want a schedule that's got dates in it that I can believe in, and we don't have that. So it's the second step that's, again, Cassandra and Robin and her staff and Ashish and Andrew have already started, but that's the process that we're watching carefully and frankly are concerned how long that'll take. It's going to be complicated, it's going to be difficult, and you might have to challenge some of your fundamental assumptions, like Graham mentioned. So with that, the rest of my slides are consistent with what I've done in the past, so I don't know that we need to go through them all, but I've got a slide on each of the high-risk areas, and a lot of these have not changed dramatically. We're recognizing the fact that there's fit gap and process improvements going on, but we're waiting to see kind of the results of all that. So I won't go through the rest if that's okay.
All right. Questions, Joy?
Thank you. So this may be a question for both of you. You know, we've had to change the schedule for Functional Release 1, and I think, John, in your report, you talk about, and we've heard before, about how the testing for Functional Release 1 didn't go as planned. And looking at your report, you talk about, I mean, some software defects that were identified during testing. I guess I have two questions. One is whether, on the modified schedule that we've talked about today, you know, what's our degree of confidence that the modified schedule is one that will stick given the unanticipated defects and the delays in the testing that we saw earlier in the project? And I don't know if there's anything that we've done to identify what the cause of the defects were, is that because of the kind of, you know, the complexity of the customization that we were seeking, just wanting to understand how we've taken what we've learned and experienced so far and tried to make sure that the revised schedules are, that we've got confidence in being able to stick to those timelines?
Great. And I appreciate the question. That's exactly the areas that we're looking at, Joy. So let me take the questions in opposite order. There are things, and were things, that were identified as kind of the root causes of some of the challenges with the schedule for FR1. As documented in our report, testing was a big part of it. We looked into testing, and a lot of that was bridging. We looked into the bridging software testing, and a lot of that was data-related. So there has been a bunch of work on the project, and I think, just to the extent it can be included in a plan, at least the interim plan for FR1, I think that learning has been incorporated. And there's also some out-of-the-box thought going on around even deployment of FR1 versus FR2. So to get to your second, your first question, which is the level of confidence, the schedule that CGI, that CalSTRS presented for FR1, I think we're far enough along, there's enough out-of-the-box work going on now around scope, that that seems like a reasonable schedule. My confidence for FR2 and beyond is low. As a technician, as an IVNV, as a person in my position, I need to see it and smell it and pick it up and poke it, and I'm waiting for the schedule. And that's, as I mentioned, that's going to only be available really after the negotiations are complete, so it'll be a little while, but...
The first of the year.
I think that's ambitious.
Okay. Cassandra?
Just a comment or clarification.
Yeah.
The proposed schedule that CGI has presented to us hasn't been approved. We haven't, this is the exercise that we're going through or started to go through, was to validate that schedule because of the size of it. And then we started to discuss the fit gap analysis because of all the complexity that we were dealing with. So once we get through the fit gap analysis, we want to have an achievable schedule that is fully validated by both parties that we can present to you. So it will likely look different than what this proposal was initially from July.
Great. Thank you.
The one thing I'd add, just on the testing side for FR1, they've turned a corner a little bit recently. And if you think about testing as a little bit like a production line, that you're sort of generating defects out of the software, and then you're trying to correct those defects, put them back, you know, put the fixes back into the software. And if you're generating defects faster than you can fix them, you get further and further behind. I think the project's sort of got to a point now where it's sort of, it's over the hill in a way, that they're fixing defects faster than their new ones are being generated, so the total outstanding is starting to go down, which is a positive sort of feature. It doesn't mean they're down, right? But it doesn't necessarily tell you when they'll finish. But it's an improved outlook than it was a couple of months ago.
Tom? Thank you. So this is all very illuminating. It's kind of frustrating as a board member because most of the things that come to us, we, even if they're information items, there might be things that this board can do in response. Everything we've heard this morning so far, there have been possibilities of things we could do as a board. And here it's very frustrating because all we do is we get these reports, and it's a very passive process. We can ask questions, but is there, are there decisions that are sort of business decisions as opposed to technical decisions about the direction that we're going with this? Because I just feel like it's very, it seems to me that it's ineffective oversight by this board because I don't think this board really has anything to decide here. So we're spending a lot of time hearing bad news that kind of came on suddenly and no reflection on anybody. Everybody's working really hard, but, you know, maybe it happens, and it happens a lot, and so maybe it's not a surprise that it happened here. But I'm trying to understand what role this board plays other than just listening, in which case, I'm not sure we need to spend so much time listening.
Cassandra?
Yeah, I think that there are going to be some decision points that you guys will be participating in making. I mean, some of it is, when we engaged or move forward with developing the RFP and the strategy that we were going to undertake in implementing a new pension administration system, the strategy that we had decided was that we wanted to buy an off-the-shelf product with limited customization. If we choose to try to put, you know, a lot more customization right up front, because that's what we absolutely need because of the volume and scale of our system, that would be a strategy that we would have to agree to. That would have to be a different strategy that we would want to bring to the board, say, do you want to, do you want to try to accept the software product as it is to the larger degree and have some of the functionality not be what, you know, at the prime processing that we would like it to be right out of the gate? Or do you want to move directions and say, we're going to go into more customization of the system, which changes the strategy, increases the cost, there's a lot of complexity with that. But it might be the right thing to do. We need to get to that point to understand what we really want the system to do. So that would be one of the issues. The time it takes would be another issue. Whether or not we want to continue to move forward with a phased-in approach, because the phased-in approach that we had all agreed upon was to avoid a big-bang approach that comes with, you know, getting the system stabilized to the point that we can turn one system off and start the other one in full processing mode. We did a phased-in approach that we can have some wins with that. But what we're finding is that the complexity of keeping the systems bridging for those long periods of time that Graham was discussing could be a higher risk than the value that we would receive from that. So those are the decisions that we would be discussing with you, and I think that those are the things that you would need to contemplate in our proposal as we have an action plan for you to buy into. So I think that those are the things that you will be hearing next time we come to you in February, but hopefully, this was, I mean, I appreciate your point, and I agree. It's trying to lay the foundation of the activities that we're churning through as we're working on the project so that we can get to the point to say, this is the, you know, these are the strategy approaches, this is our recommendation, and we recommend this way or we recommend this way. But those are going to be the decisions that the board has to buy into because they are big decisions.
Great. Thank you.
Tom?
Well, I think I'm still in Paul's camp, but, you know, since this is my last meeting, I take it for what it's worth. But I don't, based on what Cassandra just said, I still don't hear a board decision for the board in the normal range of things. This is an important day-to-day, this is an important element about how you choose to do your work day-to-day over time and how you adapt to it. And, you know, admittedly, it's a big data project, it's got a big dollar amount tied to it, but I really don't see why it's really a board thing. And, you know, it's just a question of level of materiality that this board chooses to get into.
Make it?
The project cost is under the board's authority, so that's where the primary, that's where the primary decision is going to have to be made, and the decisions and the recommendations that we bring to you are going to impact the level, the length and the cost of the project, which is under the purview of the board because it's not an investment contract, it's an administration technology project, and so that's what you'd be providing decisions on.
I'm still puzzled why, but...
Okay.
Probably because of the dollar figure, right?
Yeah.
Lynn?
Well, it depends how you look at the threshold as one-day thing or something being done year by year by year. And this is really something that's being done year by year by year. So anyway, it's just something that I find anomalous. by year by year. So anyway, it's just something that I find anomalous, in terms of trying to ask this body to deal with something that's so highly technical, that there's no way we can ever be really informed, and as to which you're going to have to make a lot of decisions day by, as the project goes along, as to how you want to do your work. So, but that's, take it for what it's worth. As I say, this is my last day.
If I could offer maybe one thought. And I totally understand the frustration, I guess, is that, because in many cases, you know, there is going to be a decision you're going to be asked to make in February, right? And so part of what this whole exercise is to do is try and equip you with the kind of facts that may help inform that. But it's really hard to talk about these things in the abstract. And the timing of these decisions doesn't align with board meeting schedules very well. But I do think there's a value in transparency, for its own sake, just having seen some other organizations that have gone through similar projects, and maybe the board wasn't as engaged early on, and the price tag sort of crept up, and crept up, and crept up, and crept up. And all of a sudden, it was a really, really big number, because maybe people hadn't been paying attention to it. At least, this is a level of transparency that there may not be a lot for you to sort of say yes or no about. But the fact that you're looking at it has an impact for everybody behind us, right?
So when it's time to make a decision, you'll feel the momentum of this and have a better appreciation for that context, rather than be surprised and say, oh, my gosh, we didn't realize these things were challenged. I mean, none of us thought this would be easy. So we're, I mean, on the staff side, this is hard work all the time. Any large-scale technology project has those issues. It's just that we don't normally have, as Tom said, share every blow with you. And this one, we are being, I think, very transparent in terms of the ups and downs of the project. But it's important for you to see where the momentum is, so that when we make a decision next year, you'll have context to those.
Lynn?
Thank you. I'm going to disagree with my colleagues on the board, and I do appreciate you bringing us these information items. I thought today's discussion was very helpful, and does set the context as we go on and make further decisions. And of course, it is a high-profile project for the fund, so I think it is important to keep us informed. Thank you.
Good.
All right. That looks like it does it for us. Gentlemen, thank you. Cassandra, I think we look forward to seeing you in February.
Right on time.
Or Andrew and Ashish, right?
All of us will all be here.
There you go. Lisa, come on in. We will be breaking for lunch after this presentation.
I'm excited.
And not yet. Close, though.
So I also brought a phone-a-friend, and I'll introduce you to her in just a moment. But I'd like to start by changing the gears a bit. Believe it or not, it's been a year since we last presented our status on our long-term facility efforts. So I wanted to start today, is this my clicker?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. So I wanted to start today by recapping the board direction at the November 2016 meeting. So the board authorized the establishment of a building fund for $181 million, which has been completed, and approved an $8 million expenditure to complete the design of a second tower as an alternative, at the same time continuing to explore leasing options and any existing acquisition possibilities in the local market. But before I get into our progress on the long-term front, I wanted to introduce you to my friend, Giselle Geiger. She will serve as CalSTRS Business Lead in the design development of a potential new tower. And her and her team have been instrumental in the optimization effort that has spanned over the last two years. And it has been a tremendous effort to optimize this building to the point where we can stay in the building as long as possible. So she's going to present to you with the short-term activities that have been completed to date, as well as give you a temperature check on where we are today on our space front. So I'll hand it over to Giselle.
Thank you, Lisa. So I want to share with you our activities over the past year. The Facility Planning and Development Team has continued activities to validate our occupant growth, and we've also worked to maximize seating availability at headquarters. I'm going to give you a brief recap of our early planning efforts, followed by an explanation of this year's work. So in 2014, we did a space assessment with JLL Workplace Strategies Group. They interviewed our executive staff and conducted a thorough analysis of occupant activity. And they advised us that we would be out of space by 2016. And that study did give us some recommendations of ways to increase our desks and enable CalSTRS to be able to stay in this space until 2019. We started an effort to work on an optimization project that reconfigured existing desk furniture and expanded that seating capacity. So facility staff worked with support from throughout the organization, through each floor of the building, to increase desks. That work was really based on a couple of things. First, we looked at the actual business that each area was performing, and we were confined by the original floor plan for each individual tower floor. And the way that worked out, on floors like 15 and 16, where there's more private offices, there were fewer opportunities to add additional desks. But on floors like 12, where Audit Services is, and they had a group that were ready to telework, we were able to add a greater amount of smaller-sized desks. Now, this work was only to our workstation furniture and corresponding data and electrical systems. We didn't add anything to the building infrastructure. So we didn't increase our mechanical systems or restrooms. And also, while we were going through these activities, we did reduce the available space we had for meetings and training. So additionally, while we were working through, we identified workrooms and store spaces that we could clear and add temporary seats for those individuals that may be here at headquarters for a limited duration. So we do have additional temporary space that we can use in an emergency. This next slide shows the distribution of individual desks from our original building design through post-optimization. And you can see in our traditional desks, those eight-by-eight, eight-by-12 desks and an office space, we really didn't get a large amount of gains. Our gains were really in a smaller footprint, those bench seats and pod seats. And as we've worked through this effort, we've also been benchmarking best practices in office design, and really getting to know how each business area works at CalSTRS. We know that those smaller solutions aren't the best solution for everybody at CalSTRS. You know, the need for private work areas is going to continue in the future, and we're also going to have a need for space to collaborate as a team. We know that bench seats probably aren't appropriate for all individuals, and somebody like an investment portfolio manager or an attorney is not going to be able to work well in that space. So this spring, once we'd identified all the opportunities to increase seats, we went through a revised assessment to look at where we were with space. We really wanted to validate that we would still be out of space by 2019. We wanted to reevaluate our growth assumptions, and we wanted to see how we were using space now. So we went through the building, we interviewed key directors and leaders, we created an inventory of vacant seats, and we took HR data and aligned the HR data to each individual floor plan. So from that, we were able to create a spatial model of the seat availability on each floor. And we were able to confirm that we would be out of space by 2019. So this slide shows you an example of a spatial diagram for 2017, 2018. And on this slide, you'll get the detail of each business area that's on each floor. The teal floors represent more than 10% vacancy of seats. The gold floors represent 5% to 9%, and the red floors are less than 5%. When I get to future years, you'll see gray, which is zero or less. And our preference for business operations is really to be in that 5% range, because that gives us enough space to last about three months through turnover.
And to put it in perspective, when you're looking at a 5% vacancy, and you assume 100 people on a floor, a 5% vacancy is only five seats. So I think that's important to correlate. When you looked at the previous slide that Giselle did, it gives you an idea of really how many seats that is.
Yeah. So if we start with the first year, 17, 18, that's this year, we have about five floors that have less than 5%. And the other thing that we're experiencing this year is that we're out of things like private offices. So on 16, which is the executive floor, we don't have any growth space for private offices for our directors or attorneys. Also, on 14 and 15, where investments are located, they are having to switch to a model where they're sharing private offices for investment officers and portfolio managers. Next, in 18, 19, we really start to see that we've got nine floors that are less than 5%. And this year, we really start to have a crunch on those traditional spaces, so supervisor spaces and those more analytical spaces, we don't have an availability for future growth. By 1920, even though there are spots that you can see availability, when you average out the whole building, we are short 54 seats for staff. And this is really the year that we know we're going to have to identify interim space. By 2021, a larger proportion of the building is just without additional space. And our overall deficit of seats is 109 seats. And the final year, 21, 22, we are short 168 So to support this effort, we really thought that it would be a good idea to supplement our policy for our facility and workspace. And we instituted a seating assignment policy. We took all the seating assignments back from individual business areas, and now they're centrally managed through the facility unit. That gives us some internal controls and allows us to monitor how seats are assigned and who those seats are going to. It also gives us real-time data of how those seats are being filled, so we'll know much sooner our needs for additional space. And we're confident that we've thoroughly vetted our growth assumptions this year, and that we've exhausted our ability to accommodate additional headquarters occupants beyond July of 2019. Given our timeline for a long-term solution, it will be necessary to secure interim space for headquarters staff. And we expect to come back in February to discuss interim space solutions with you.
Okay. So moving on to long-term activities and next steps, just to give you an idea of what's been going on over the past year, in May of 2017, the LAO's office added supplemental language to the 1718 Budget Act, requiring additional information to the legislature prior to the board making a decision on our long-term strategy. The information required is really the same analysis that we would be doing to bring you back those alternatives that you're looking for. In addition, the Retirement Coalition sent a letter to the legislature in support of the supplemental language, and identified a number of additional questions related to the long-term need for space and the proposed alternatives. Staff responded to those questions the last month, and a copy of the letter was provided to the board and also attached to this item. So as to the progress of our long-term alternatives, we did develop an RFP for our construction management, for our construction management oversight firm. We held a bidders conference and evaluated the proposals. And I'm happy to announce that Ridge Capital was the chosen vendor. And they're here today, so I'd like to introduce them. So Michelle. Michelle Azavito was the Development Manager for our current headquarters while working under Panatoni Development, and she will serve in the same capacity for a potential second tower. And Dave Higgins was the President of HMH Builders, who is the General Contractor for our current headquarters. In addition, they have partnered with Stoke, who are actually experts in the design of high-performance buildings, and will help us meet our sustainability goals and meet our sustainability vision. So I think we're in really good hands, as far as the team that we have. They know us very well, and they definitely understand our business objectives. The other RFPs that we're looking at are for the other partners, our design professional, as well as our general contractor. Those RFPs should be going out on the street, maybe within the next month or so. And then we hope to have those partners on board by January of 2018. And then finally, I just wanted to provide kind of a high-level timeline with you that illustrates the activities and design phases that we're going to be going through over the next year, to gather the information necessary for you to make a final decision. So starting this month, in November 2017, we're working with CalSTRS, and Mike Deray, and the team in real estate, and their market expert to actually analyze local opportunities for long-term leasing, as well as acquisition opportunities. As I mentioned, in January of 2018, we should have our other design partners on board and hope to start the visioning session for what a second tower may look like. We plan on providing the board with continuing progress at the February and May meetings. Harry had mentioned, last November, that would be nice to see what that progress looks like, and if there's some schematics that you could look at it. And I think in the May time period is when we could bring back something that's tangible, and something that you could actually visually see, based on where we would be in the design phase. You will notice, as you go through, that the construction document phase is due to run through June of 2019. But we would like to come back to the board in November of 2018 timeframe. And there's some value in obtaining this decision sooner, and it really, really revolves around momentum. If the decision of the board was to move forward with a second tower, there are some advantages that we would have by coming to you sooner than later. For one thing, we're going to be paying monthly overhead for all of our partners. So we're going to have a, you know, construction management contract, an architect contract, and a GC. And we'll be paying a monthly overhead fee for their time, regardless of the work that they're doing. So when we get into the CD phase, it could be that there's people that are on that team that might not be so involved with that. And if we have a decision that we are going to move forward with construction, they could be looking at the construction activities ahead. Additionally, based on Ridge's experience, the construction document phase is really when the general contractor knows enough design detail to begin looking for the most qualified subcontractors, and ordering long lead-time items for the project, like steel or what the skin is going to be composed of. And I do want to mention, there are other high-profile projects that are approved, have funding to move forward, a couple of state buildings, as well as a health, excuse me, healthcare facility in the rail yard. So the sooner that we have a decision from the board, if that's the direction we're going to go, the more likely that we can acquire those most qualified subcontractors as well. Giselle mentioned before that we're going to need interim space, that we've identified that, and we're sure in 2019 that that's going to be a need. The sooner a final decision that we have, the less time we're going to be paying for short-term space. And then lastly, and I think kind of a very important component of this, the sooner the decision, the sooner we can begin to really solicit third-party opportunities. We've all got our feelers out, but it's really hard to align what we might do to what the needs are of someone that's looking for space. So that's always a challenge. So, and that's all we have. So at this time, I welcome any questions or any concerns with our suggested timeline.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I was just curious, under the timeline, when would you plan on reporting back to the legislature regarding the cost options?
So our commitment is to return to the legislature prior to the board making a decision. So if we come into the November 2018 timeframe, we would have to do that around October of 2018.
So is it just a written report, or is it a hearing, meeting with them?
It's a written report that we would submit to the legislature.
Okay.
Yes.
And my other question was on the leasing option, the longer-term leasing option. I think it referenced 100,000 square feet. So if you were to go with that option, how long would that take you? How many years would that take you through for capacity?
Can you answer that question?
If I recall, from our previous assessment, that would be enough space to last us five to 10 years. So we were looking at an overall growth space of approximately 260,000 square feet to last us for 20 years.
Thank you. Sure.
So Lisa, in terms of decisions that the board needs to make, in terms of one way or the other, okaying the second, you're looking at November 18, right?
Yeah. And again, one of the things we mentioned is that we'll have enough done to come back with a not-to-exceed amount. We might not have the final budget, but we can tell you the amount that it would be, and not to exceed that amount. Because I think at that point in the process, we'll have enough information to bring back for you. So it's your comfort level on that. This is just an informational item, but, you know, I think the discussion is good, to make sure that there's a comfort level, that that would be what we'd be coming back to you with.
And with that timeframe, the timeframe that you've laid out, I'm kind of mindful of, yesterday, we spent time talking about culture, and culture of CalSTRS, culture of this building, how we all feel when we walk in here. And I was just made aware, I think this week, of some fairly high-profile hires that we've made recently, that they don't have private offices, or, which seems, that's interesting to me, and notable. And I know, working in a school, I accommodate all the time. I've worked in a broom closet as a speech pathologist, and I mean, we've all kind of make our accommodations. So I think I really appreciate staff's level of doing that. I think, and maybe, Jack, maybe you can answer this better, like the influence of culture, and if we do lease, or we have, you know, I'm kind of wondering how this, the implications of the next couple of years and space.
Well, it's a decision we're sorry we have to make. I wouldn't tell you otherwise. We're behind schedule, I think, on the ideal scenario, which means we're going to have a tough decision which part of the organization would do, put in a different situation. So we're very... So we're very concerned about it. We haven't made, we haven't assessed that yet, which part of the organization would most likely work. It really partly depends on what, we've got a few creative ideas on the leasing opportunity, which we haven't fully vetted. There's one that might work better than others, so I guess I'd like to hold judgment on that. But there's no doubt about it, we've lost some time on this, doing it right. I would say that.
Okay. Thanks. Tom?
This, again, is sort of a puzzling item to be taking so much time on our part. I understand the visibility of building a building is dramatic, but my, and it's very difficult to equate apples and oranges, which is rent versus owning. But I think the way I would want to see, if I were going to be here to make a decision about this, would be to compare ongoing forward occupancy costs, one against the other. My takeaway from the last presentation is the differences are so minor that it makes the whole dialogue not really worth having, and that we should be guided by the staff's preferences. But, and again, this is a place where building an institution's culture is important, and being in one place is really critical to that. So I would urge that that's the way you frame the issue, because then I think the difficulty, the decision, sort of starts to melt away.
Drew?
This is just a technical question, but do you anticipate the $8 million approved for design being able to take you through all the way to November of 2018 with construction documents underway?
That's a great question. That's going to be about the time that we probably will run out of money.
Okay.
Yeah.
Once you get into construction documents.
Exactly. That's when the big money starts kind of flowing.
Paul?
So, I mean, what you're talking about is coming back to us for a decision in November, but many times in the presentation, you seem to say, the earlier we can make a decision, the better position we'll be in for this reason or that reason. So is there a way that you'd be prepared to bring to us a decision earlier so that we could take advantage of these opportunities?
I don't think so, because I think there are a lot of activities that still need to go into the design phases, and so I think that would be probably the soonest we could bring it back, where I would feel comfortable providing you with the most robust information and the most accurate information that we can gather, because I think it's going to take us a while to get through those conceptual and schematic phases. So I think that would probably be the earliest that we could come back.
So that would be the earliest that you would feel comfortable making a recommendation, too?
Correct.
Is that right? Okay.
Correct.
So it's not a constraint on how you're working with us or anything like that?
No.
It's just that you think there's a year, years' worth of work to do.
Yes.
Before we make a decision.
We've tried to scrub this and squeeze out as much time as we could into the schedule, because we really do see the longer it takes, there are millions of dollars that could be wasted. So it is a time-money decision, for sure, but it does feel November is going to be the best we can do to do it right, which we would want it as successful as this project was.
Absolutely.
You know, on time, on budget, as they say.
Harry?
Yeah, so just a couple of things. I agree with Tom relative to just doing an analysis, rent versus owning, right? My, I have a pretty strong view, which I'm not going to express at this point, as to whether or not we should do this or not. But my bigger questions are really around longer term, how, whether all these assumptions around workspace will actually materialize or will we see a change, and I don't think any of us know. But I do think some better insights into West Sacramento and the development that's going to be taking place here and the role that a second tower could play in terms of being a key, we're in an important relationship, I believe, in this area right now, and to what extent can we, will that be a benefit to the, lack of a better term, the community? And I would like to have a little bit more insight into that scenario. So we have the space, we own the space, we have air rights already, a lot of that work has already been done. So now it's really around managing the cost of it, being able to justify it, juggling all the other big pieces of projects at this.
I just want to mention that what's different this time around, Harry, for us is that when we designed this building, it was for a single corporate tenant, and the floor plans and doors and hallways were constructed as a fluid, one-tenant situation, since this proposal will be designed around having multiple tenants. To the extent we're wrong and would change growth assumptions in some way, we would use that space for, obviously, lease income to the organization. So we have flexibility that we didn't have in this structure at all. And it really is with a different intent, really, for the early years, where it's leased out by far to private tenants. And we have some interesting state agencies that are hungry for space. I mean, and there is very little Class A office space in town. So there's, you know, there's some flexibility here, which we just didn't have here in this time around.
Karen?
Wow. I appreciate all the transparency and all the information that's been given. And, you know, when I think about this project, I think of it as building my own personal house. Before we go step by step, I want to know as much information as I can, what it's going to impact, how it's going to impact my family, how it's going to impact the community. And, you know, when I think about CalSTRS, the bottom line is our members. And whatever we do, or whatever we decide to do, that perception of building something big or little, or sharing with somebody else, or spending a lot of money doing that, I want to make sure that we always think of our members.
Appreciate that.
Cher?
So Lisa, if I, do I understand your response to Paul's question accurately, that there is, we have been talking about this for quite a while, you've given us a lot of information, I appreciate Harry's request for more, but kind of West SAC eval, evaluation. But is there, are there things that the board can take action on earlier than November 18 that would help expedite? Or in your explanation to Paul, are you saying that the things that we have in place now, the relationships, the contracts, the work that we're doing, that we're sort of doing all we can to support? I'm thinking about money, and I'm thinking about people, and I'm thinking about culture. And if there's a way we can, as a board, make decisions to help move things forward in a thoughtful way. I really appreciate your communication with our stakeholders and our constituency groups, because I think, to Karen's point, I think there are a lot of concerns with our funding level and building something and the optics of that. I think those are fair critiques. But I also think anyone who hangs out here knows, you know, that I think we try and steward these resources really thoughtfully. And so, so I guess that's my question, is there anything we can do or decide that would help?
Let's go back and think. I appreciate that, you saying that. Let's, let us think about it. I do know what we would have delivered to you next November is far more detail and thought and probably a clearer perspective on budget than we did when the board approved this tower. And I think, Michelle, if you particularly will remember, it was a very evolving concept, and we all recognized at the time, this has got to happen, we've got to get going. This one, I think we're putting a lot of, tightening the bow and really getting all fine-tuned in a much more detailed fashion than we did the first time around, just, and we're obviously doing it all in open session, too, which we didn't when we did this tower. So let's, let me take that as an opportunity and see if there is a different way of thinking about that. I don't know. Thank you.
Harry?
Briefly, I agree with Ms. Yamamoto. This is a people business, right? This is, that's, this is about, it's about people. And my, in my, my career primarily has been in education, and I've been in a lot of discussions around facilities versus human capital versus facilities, and I've had vigorous disagreement with people who've said that facilities don't matter. It's usually the people who are sitting in the air-conditioned offices, and they're not teaching in classrooms with fans on, with 35 kids who tell you that it's only about the people, and quality people trump the facilities. So my point is, is that it does matter. I know initially, should we go forward with this tower, there will be an opportunity for leasing the facility out, so I want to understand the math around that.
Sure.
In a real simple way, because I'm not the sharpest person around the dais on that, but it could be explained to me that the math would work out. Secondly, I'd like to know more about the partnership opportunities in the, in the community with West Sacramento.
Sure.
I'd like to know about the implications to the larger economy. The economy is healthy now, but it's not always going to be as healthy as it is. This will create jobs. I'd like to know how many jobs it will create, what types of jobs it will create, and for how long those jobs will be created. And then, longer term, the people, if people feel good about where they work, I believe that there's enough evidence that shows if people feel good about the environment they're working in, their productivity will be better, their loyalty will be higher, they'll stay longer. So there's a price to that as well. I don't know if we can ever quantify that.
Yeah.
So I think I'm showing my hand a little bit, but I still think I need some other concrete numbers that make the economics of this work.
Sure, and that's what we want, you know, we need the time to do that due diligence. I think that we owe it to you, we owe it to the stakeholder groups, we owe it to the membership, to make sure that we do our due diligence in bringing back to you the information that you need to make a final decision.
All righty. I don't see anyone else in line. It is 12:30. We will break for lunch. Oh, I'm sorry, Denise, come on up. I'm sorry, I thought you were just hanging out behind John. I apologize.
Good afternoon, everyone. Denise Bradford, I'm Chair of Retirement Committee for the California Teachers Association. And I guess you would say I'm here representing the family today. We have had several, many concerns at this point about the new building. It's not really a decision of whether to do it or not, but what I think that needs to be done is also a lot of education along the way with whatever we're presenting. CalSTRS has been great helping us get our members educated, and I would ask that we continue to do that and perhaps get out ahead of this a little bit and not try and solve the problem after. It's been blown out of proportion, maybe? Is that a good word? So thank you, thank you to the board for giving this such thoughtful consideration, and I think our members need to know that, so any information I can share and our other constituents, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, Denise. All righty. Oh, Ed?
I have a couple of questions, and one of the questions I have, and probably might seem naive to you, but where does the $181 million come from?
Comes from the teachers' fund.
Pardon me?
Comes from the assets of the fund.
Assets of the fund, okay.
Jack, correct me, when I say something wrong, make sure you correct me.
Yeah, okay. Whatever it is, I'll tell you.
You'd be leasing space, so it's a little bit different than this structure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, I'll tell you, the perception out there is, hey, I got large class sizes. I just went to a rally yesterday where the teachers in Sacramento across the river are going out on strike, because they don't have facilities, they don't have the kinds of things that we're putting up for here. And this is a great example of board way ahead of the people they represent. You better go out there and sell list to us first before you start rolling this thing down, saying, I want it soon as possible. You're dealing with our money. And when I have to have 41 kids in my classroom, I really have very little sympathy if somebody's a little crowded here in this building, especially when you raised my rate by up to 10%. And I'm getting static from my district on salary because you raised their rate to pay for the unfunded liability. You guys have a job to do. I'll tell you, anytime I talk to members about you having a building, another tower, they're pissed, because they aren't seeing anything like that that affects them in their daily work. I know it's tough, but I'll tell you, as an automation is coming in and so on, I never thought in my life that I'd see a car that you could get in and without having a driver. And it looks pretty good now that I'm turning 80, because I might need that car. And you might not think about what automation's going to do, but I think you are really running way down and really not looking at the way the world's changing. I hope that this is not an attack on the people that are doing a great job here, this is really looking at the reality of what our profession's all about. Thank you.
Ed, and as soon as you can put us together with some of the people that we need to be together with, we'll be out there talking. Absolutely. Because you're absolutely right.
I hope that we do.
We have, we have to sell this, because the optics are huge. They were huge last time. You're absolutely right. And I think all of us here are ready. All right? Thanks. All righty. Anything else? Harry?
Mr. Folia, I hope I have one-tenth of the energy that you have at 80. One-tenth of that energy and fire.
Absolutely. All righty. We're recessed for lunch. Thanks.